Good morning and welcome to the first monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. This is the first meeting of the term of office that begins December 1st, 2015, and runs through November 30th of 2017, so it's our inaugural meeting of what we constitute as a new term of office, so welcome. At this time, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, as I say, normally at meetings, it's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing, the board chair reserves the right to call upon any interested person in attendance to pose a question or make comment on a specific matter that is before the board today. It just happens today, there is not very much of business on the agenda, other than we have an executive session regarding a property tax settlement and a matter of pending litigation, as well as potentially some nominations to boards and commissions. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the November 20th regular meeting. Are there any corrections, adjustments to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented?
So move.
Without objection. I do want to acknowledge Kathy Seider, who is with us today. Kathy will be the interim reporting secretary until such time as a new executive assistant to the first selectman is hired, so welcome. Kathy comes to us having done the minutes for the Board of Estimin and Taxation. She's done quite a stellar job, so I can assure you that we're a lot less intensive and high maintenance than the VET is when it comes to our minutes. So we approve those minutes? All in favor? Okay, so updates, as part of the updates, we have two guests with us. The first is Bea Crumbine, who is the Town of Greenwich's ambassador-at-large, and she is going to read a letter that was received by the town, and I'll let her do the further introduction.
Thank you, Peter. It's a great pleasure to be in front of this esteemed group of four. Nice to see you. I am standing with great pride to read a letter which was sent to Yolanda Smiriglio, who is standing to my right, from the mayor of Rose, Italy, province of Cosenza. This is the familial home of Peter Tessie and Drew Marzullo, and they were very, very pleased to see that Peter's election had been such a success. And the mayor of Rose, named the Honorable Mario Bria, has written the following. Dear Peter, I send you all my best wishes on your reconfirmation as the leader of the Town of Greenwich. To have been reelected for the third time indicates that you've worked well and that the citizens of Greenwich respect you and your service to the town. The City of Rose is also proud of your election victory, and we are sharing the photographs of the party given in your honor by the Sons of Rose. We all enjoy seeing the pictures of you and your beautiful family whom we had the pleasure of meeting on our last visit to Greenwich. We hope that the Sister City Declaration between Rose and Greenwich will continue to be defined by the new cultural and social initiatives. Remembering your kindness and hospitality, we look forward to returning your goodwill when you visit the City of Rose. I send great affection for you and your family, for the families of Beatrice Crumbine, Luciano Siciliano, Yolanda Smiriglio, and Pietro Covello, and all the people from Rose in your area and throughout the United States. We must remember that distances don't count; our esteem for each other keeps us close. The Honorable Mario Bria, Mayor of Rose. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bea, and thank you, Yolanda, and our extended appreciation to Mayor Bria for these words of congratulations and goodwill. We look forward to planning a very exciting trip, hopefully in 2016.
There you go.
Grazie.
Will there be a stop in our room?
We're going to go by airlingus.
Always do.
Okay, so the next exciting news we have today is coming to us from our Department of Public Works, and with us today, we have our Commissioner, Amy J. Seibert, and the Superintendent of Highways, Joseph Roberto, and we have something to truly applaud and celebrate, and we look forward to the Commissioner's remarks.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for having us. What we are here today to do is to recognize a great achievement by Joe Roberto. I want to recognize him for completing the Connecticut Transportation Leadership Program. This is a program put on by the University of Connecticut's T-Square, their transportation institute. It's a great program that shows Joe's ongoing dedication to continuing education and learning in his field, you name it. He's been in there dealing with traffic in highways and management and leadership and, you know, runs the gamut. It's a great program, and I really applaud Joe for taking part in it. And it takes, you know, a lot of dedication. I think he had to do some special project work for it and all, and Joe, I think it's really a tribute to him, and we should be very, very happy. We're very fortunate that we have him running our highway department, so that's why we brought him here for that. So we've embarrassed him enough. We also wanted to give a shout out also, you know, to the highway department, and Carmine Vidiello, our operations manager, as well as Pete Kerpesky, our planning and project manager, and really the whole highway department, Joe included. We received another award earlier in the season by the Connecticut Association of Street and Highway Officials, which is the Distinguished Service Award, and that is given to us because we, for the municipality that continually demonstrates its dedication and support to the principles and ideals of CACO, meaning that we take excellent care of our roadway infrastructure. So we were recognized in the state for that, and I think, again, that shows that we have a great highway department in this town. They do a lot of really good work. They're out there, as we know, in all kinds of weather, taking good care of us, making sure we have as smooth a ride as we can, and so that's also something we'd like to recognize them for today.
Great, congratulations to you, Joe, for your personal achievement, the achievement of leadership that you've demonstrated for your division, who truly is at the forefront of a municipality in terms of roads, sidewalks, snow, refuse, leaves, what have you. You've truly exemplified the very best, and we'd like to once again applaud and commend your achievement in service to the citizens of the Town of Greenwich. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe.
Proceeding with some other updates briefly, I had an opportunity to interview a student at Providence College, Katie Milano, who was a sophomore, who was charged in one of her urban study classes to do a case study on city suburb relations, and specifically what had made Greenwich the unique and successful community it is. Enjoyed meeting with her and fostering a dialogue for a young person to understand what goes into making a community what it is. An example just was given in terms of the quality of service it provides through wonderful civil servants like Joe Roberto and Amy Seibert. On Tuesday, November 24th, attended an interfaith Thanksgiving service at the First United Methodist Church, right here on East Putnam Avenue. It was a wonderful expression and display on the part of many of the faiths here in town, and we're very pleased to participate with two of our state representatives and -- John, were you there? No, you were attending something else. But needless to say, it was a very nice program. John attended on Thanksgiving Day the Thanksgiving service at St. Catherine of Siena and read the proclamation. I want to thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
I was very pleased to be invited to the Sons of Rose for an Italian family dinner on November 28th, and enjoyed a very intimate evening of good cheer with the Crumbines and all my friends with Figlia de Rose, so thank you, Yolanda, for your hospitality. On Sunday, we had our swearing-in ceremony, which launched us on our next two years. On Monday, we had a very enjoyable ceremony downtown, designating one of nine municipal historic districts, and they're already established, but this was an effort by the Greenwich Preservation Network led by Diane Fox to plaque these areas with appropriate signage that only demarcates where they are but gives you a history of them. And one of the interesting things that came up in the presentation is that they have what it referred to on their QR code, so if you have a smartphone device, you can put it up to it and you can download more extensive history about the area in which you're walking through. So it's quite remarkable where we've come with technology and being able to disseminate information, but I do want to commend all the parties who were involved, because it was the historical society, the various departments coordinating with the town and the Board of Ed to do that. We had a staff meeting here on Tuesday, the first one of the term, with the various departments. Certainly those meetings are a wonderful opportunity to hear all the different activities that are taking place within the different areas of the town, and again, everybody is gearing up for the budget preparations for the '16-'17 fiscal year, which Mr. Branyan, our town administrator, is working with me in earnest over the next several weeks to bring together. We had an oath of office given to three Board of Education employees who are going to have parking enforcement privileges so that they can manage the vast parking inventory over at Hillside Road, and we got them up and running so that they can issue tickets, one of those perhaps less pleasurable things people receive from our local government, but needless to say, important for safety. Yesterday, I was at Riverside School for a program sponsored by the Conservation Commission, by the Greenwich Community Gardens, supported by the Tree Conservancy, and had to do it composting. And so Riverside School is one of the first to embark upon a school-wide leaf composting program on premise. It's part of an educational unit that they're integrating, and it really was a nice expression of education, environmental stewardship coming together, and I want to applaud specifically Alexandra Mock from the Conservation Commission staff for undertaking this initiative with the schools and the Green Schools Committee. On Saturday, just one item, Saturday, November 21st, there was a retirement ceremony for the local 1042 International Association of Firefighters. Retiring were longtime firemen Lieutenant John Stashenko, Lieutenant John Edwards, and Lieutenant Bill Ingraham. So we wish all of them well, and we know Bill is an integral part of the community, and we'll be seeing probably quite a bit more of him in the next many years, so wish them well. Finally, yesterday, the Board of Selectmen unanimously sent along to the Chairman of the Board of Education, whom is now Ms. Laura Erickson, a letter which I will read into the record. It pertains to the ongoing deliberations with the New Lebanon Elementary School. The letter, again dated the first, sent yesterday electronically, reads as follows. "It is my understanding the New Lebanon Elementary School Building Committee will be presenting their schematic design concept, herein referred to as Option 1, for approval to the Board of Education at their Thursday, December 3rd, 2015 BOE Work Session. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we are pleased and excited the New Lebanon Building Committee and the Board of Education continues to move the new school construction forward, and we reaffirm our support to construct a new school for New Lebanon Elementary School. However, as we understand Option 1, it appears to have several deviations from the approved Scheme D, which causes the Board of Selectmen concern. At the special meeting, at the special Board of Selectmen meeting held on June 29th, 2015, the Board of Selectmen unanimously approved the Board of Education's request for municipal improvement, MI, status for the New Lebanon Elementary School, Scheme D, as presented. This approval was after several Board of Selectmen meetings, as well as Board of Education meetings, in which various schemes were presented and debated. The Board of Selectmen's collective concerns with the Option 1 are: One, uses significant more portions of the ravine than Scheme D. Two, appears to place the school building closer to Interstate I-95. Three, removes the Williams Street Ball Field from active use for a longer period of time. Four, anticipates school construction while students are in the existing building. We raise the concerns early in your approval process and prior to formal submission to the Board of Selectmen as an effort to increase transparency of thought, maintain the project schedule, and in the spirit of working together to honor the unanimously approved Scheme D. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this letter as we all work towards constructing a school that will meet the needs of the town for the long term. Sincerely, Peter J. Tessie, John F. Tonner, and Drew Marzullo." This was carbon copied to the Board of Education professional staff, other members, and Steve Walco, Chairman of the New Lebanon School Building Committee. And with that, I will turn to my esteemed colleague, Mr. Marzullo, who has so ably represented this board and our concerns on the building committee, and has his own remarks to some of the correspondence we are receiving. I just will say, as Drew begins, before he begins his comments, we have truly endeavored, and I certainly said on Sunday, that it's important as we go forward and follow our chartered responsibilities that we do so with respect and civility for all views and all thoughts. And of course, that is often a challenge, as a motion on many of these issues come to the fore and people's passions surface. Unfortunately, when that happens, and it exceeds the normal or acceptable discourse, we are going to make a point to call people on it. It certainly needs to be highlighted because it, in effect, does not lend itself to civil society and civil discourse, which we are supposed to be leaders in providing and setting an example, particularly for our young people. And so I think, again, reaffirm that, calling upon Mr. Marzullo for the following remarks.
I am speaking for myself. However, I'll let them comment after. While I am encouraged, while I encourage feedback and different points of view, criticism if warranted, whether you disagree with this board or me or not, I think feedback from all points of view help us in the decision-making process. And in this case, you know, the parents of the Byram community that come out are dedicated, they're passionate, they're well-intentioned, and they're good people. You know, I know a lot of them, we know a lot of them personally. We have received hundreds of emails over the last six months, which we welcome, like I said. It makes us, I think, better public servants. It helps us, like I said, in the decision-making process. You know, our board has been consistent from day one in regards to the concerns about the placement of a school for the next 50 years, not short-term but long-term, and once again, we have been consistent. We wrote the letter yesterday to reiterate our concerns that we've had for six months. However, in the last couple of weeks, as a final decision draws near, the tone of the correspondence have changed. Some are dishonest, some are misleading, and some call into question the integrity of this board. One email, a couple of days ago, from a Byram resident stated, "John Tonner doesn't even know where New Leb is or has never been in New Leb ever." That is a lie. Let me repeat, that is a lie. Another email that we received yesterday from a newly-elected RTM member from District 4 wrote, this is one part of the email, and I did send it, "I am appalled at what appears to be a politically motivated bureaucratic delay that is stalling the construction of a school for children who are predominantly of color. I don't know this person who wrote this, I don't think I've ever met this person. I find his email insulting, I find his email rude, and I find his email out of line. I ask him to clarify what he means by that. I ask him to clarify what he means by politically motivated. There is nothing politically motivated about our vote or our pending vote, nothing. If he is implying that this board is politically motivated and somehow wants to delay the construction, that is ludicrous." And to interject race is beyond impal-- it just is. This is why I ask him to clarify what he meant by that. My whole life, I mean, if you just think about it, has been about equality, so that is insulting on even another level. You know, I have been advocating, this board has been advocating for a school for as long as the first selectman has been in office, and two years later, I have joined in on this. Like I said, I don't know this RTM member, but I want to know if he has been advocating for a school for as many years as we have, you know? Because he signed it as an RTM member, I do think Tom Byrne, in my opinion, should weigh in on this. Tom is about respect, he talks about that, and I only bring that up because he did sign it as an RTM member. So I will end by saying, once again, this board encourages feedback. Both Peter and I will be at tonight's meeting, John has been invited as well, he has a conflict at time, he will try to make it after, but once again, emails like that do not help, especially when it's unwarranted or not based on fact. So we will continue, as this process goes along, to expedite the process, because we all know unequivocally a new school, a well-functioning school, is needed and has been long needed for Byram. We will do what we can in the process to make sure that happens. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Mr. Marzullo. And again, to affirm for the public what the role of this board is, it is to refer in municipal improvement requests submitted to us by any town entity. It could be the Housing Authority, it could be the Department of Public Works, the Parks and Rec. In this case, it's the Board of Education. It's to evaluate it, to look at it in the context of its impact to the community at large, and to render a judgment on whether it should be moved and referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a serious responsibility, and it's one that I don't believe we should be politically expeding about, just to say, okay, pass it along and let the Planning and Zoning deal with it. It is a significant responsibility, because it's dealing with one of the key assets of the town, the land, that provides and supports the facilities and services. So I appreciate Mr. Marzullo's statements, I support them, I think it speaks to effort, again, on the part of this board to establish civil discourse in this community and call people out when they exceed that type of behavior. So thank you. That concludes updates. You mentioned the meeting is tonight at 7:00.
Yes.
At New Lebanon School.
Yeah.
Proceeding forward on the agenda, old business, there is no old business at this meeting. New business, we have no new business today. Under Item 6 is appointments and nominations. We received communication from Mr. Crumbine on a number of items that are pending. I would request we consider acting upon some, if my colleagues are comfortable doing so, and specifically those are individuals whom we are well acquainted with and are currently serving. So as an example, I put out for discussion the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency, Mr. Brian Harris. He has served on this for a number of years, he is currently the Chair, he happens to also be a member of the New Lebanon School Building Committee.
Absolutely helpful.
And a terrific asset. So at this time, I would move to renominate Brian Harris as a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Agency for a term expiring 3/31/2020. Imagine we're into 2020 already. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next individual actually just was approved for filling an alternate on the Inland Wetlands, and that was Stephen Fong. His term expires already, 3/31/16, and I would, at this time, move the nomination, renomination of Stephen Fong for a term expiring 3/31/2020. Again, alternate position.
Second.
Discussion? And his status is U. All in favor? We have three individuals who are appointments to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee. Their term does not expire until June 30th, but we know that they're doing an exemplary job, and I would move to reappoint Carolyn Stevens to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2019.
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We have Leora Levy, she is also serving as a member of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, and I would move her reappointment for a term expiring June 30, 2019. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have the nomination of Peter J. Crumbine, esteemed Selectman Emeritus.
I don't know about that character.
That's going to be, I don't know, we might, we might have a-- As a member of the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee for a term expiring June 30, 2019, and I do want to acknowledge Peter's contributions, which have been enormous, in keeping the data for us on a multi-page, comprehensive spreadsheet, which is a lot of work, so is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great guy. We agree.
And Bea, we're keeping him busy for you.
He does so enjoy snap.
Yeah.
Great. Awesome.
So we keep him busy, then you could be busy. It's a beautiful arrangement. We have John Hartwell.
Jeremiah, Ian?
We don't know if there's an opening. I don't know if we ever confirmed, if there is, I'm happy to move him, but we don't know if, did we ever, did we ever find out if--
I thought there was, but I'm not sure.
I wish we had found out, because I'm happy to move him. The board, he's a wonderful person. Why don't we, Mr. Greeley is up also. So looking at the five-person Board of Ethics, Robert Greeley, who has served now for several years, his term is up, and I would move the renomination of Robert Greeley for a term expiring 3/31/19 to the Greenwich Board of Ethics. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We still need a housing, don't we?
Yeah. What about, do you fill these two?
Marilyn Khan, Julia-- Yeah, sure.
Do you want to move it?
Sure. Does she want to go on?
Yeah.
You're talking about Nish?
Yes.
Yeah, she doesn't want anymore.
All right, we'll do--
Yes, the housing.
So just if you--
For health, we have Julia Chiapetta, a term ending 3/20, correct?
Yep, 3/31/2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion? I would just say, I know Julia, she's very engaged and energetic about her role, and, you know, I love to see that in our Board and Commission members, so I'm happy to support her.
She is energetic.
So all in favor?
Aye.
And then, Dr., it's Dr., right, Marilyn Khan, also, who's been serving health for a long time, also a term 3/31/2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I would just say that Dr. Khan is someone who takes an active role as a board member. She is an integral part of the Medical Reserve Corps, which comes out of the Department of Health, which provides opportunity for people in the community who have specialized training to be certified to support the town in a case of a declared emergency, and Dr. Khan is an integral part of that, and also serves as a member of the RTM. So all those in favor of Dr. Khan?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have one, Parks and Recreation, John Hartwell. John has been on, I think this is his first term. He is a resident of Byram and has provided great insights into that park and its improvements. We certainly like to see him continue, so I'd move the renomination of John Hartwell to the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring 3/31/19.
So move.
Is there, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then perhaps we want to interview these folks in light of the, in sort of one light of the--
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that, or what about--
Yeah.
Okay. So, on the Board of Social Services, we are going to have a vacancy due to the election of Ms. Lauren Raven to the Board of Education, but in the intervening period, we have the Chair Barbara Nolan, whose term expires in March. So, at this time, I'd move the renomination of Barbara Nolan for a term expiring 3/31/2019. Is there a second?
There is.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Nisha's interested in that. The water.
Okay. Great. So, that helps advance several of the nominations for positions and gives us a head start on the calendar year 2016, because we know we'll have a lot of other business to attend to. So--
Busy meeting. Do you, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the beach, will that come before us next?
Yeah, we, we have asked the Department of Parks and Recreation to provide us their proposed fees and use schedule. We typically do that over two meetings, so I anticipate our next meeting is scheduled for the 17th. I have a feeling we are going to have a special meeting, not only for that, but perhaps some other business. So, we have to think about our calendar and how to best work it with the holiday coming.
Is it, Mr. Chairman, is it fees and policy, or just fees?
Well, they bring the fees, but tied to the fees are the policy. And one of the things that the Board of Parks and Rec actually has taken this up, since I directed a lot of the comments to get their opinion, and I think what they're doing specifically is, one of the issues has been entry into the parks prior to the parks having staff at the gate. And I think that was very transparent, and they have instituted a proposal to address that. So, I'd like to hear what that is. I haven't heard it. I just know that that was a significant concern. And then, of course, we always look at the market rate of our fees versus peer communities, and we also look at the economics of the cost to maintain the services, so that will also be part of it.
Great. Did you preliminary, I mean, he'll provide that, the issues of overcrowding, the issues where there was lots and lots of people, was that holiday weekend? Did they break that down, or is that consistent throughout the summer?
I think he'll present that in terms of the attendance figures. It certainly hits peaks around July 4th, and--
10/4.
What's the other big one? Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Okay, that concludes appointments and nominations. Executive session, we just have two items today. The first is a consideration of a property tax appeal settlement, and the other is a consideration of a worker's compensation, is that right? Yeah, worker's compensation claim. So, at this time, is there a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussion of these two items?
So moved.
Okay, without objection.
Great.